It's time for Community Matters on Y101. Today's show is brought to you by these great sponsors. Appling Healthcare in Baxley, Vidalia Federal in Vidalia and Lyons, Johnson &amp; Johnson Transport in Yuvala, and by Todd Paget Housing Center in Claxton. Now let's talk about what's happening in our community with your host, Tony "Doc" Wardlaw.
Welcome to this edition of Community Matters. I'm your host, The Doc, Tony Wardlaw, and we are happy to have you with us. Yes, with another beautiful Wednesday morning. Scott, they keep rolling around.
Yes, and it's gonna get cold now, though.
Well, we probably need some cold to kinda ease things down, get rid of all the bugs.
I agree, mosquitoes.
Well, welcome to this edition. We are blessed this morning. We are honored to have in the studio with us the one and the only, the man himself, the Honorable and the Debonair, our Chairman of Commissioners, Mr. David Sykes. How you doing this morning, sir?
Doing very well. Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well.
Good, good, good. Well, we're privileged to have you with us. We know that you stayed very busy. In fact, you had a board meeting last night.
We did, we did. This time of the year, our, we're focused on budgets, getting ready for the next year. So all of our monthly workload kinda comes down as far as starting new projects. You know, we, we temper all that down so that we can mostly focus on the budget. But last night, we had a few things that we had to take care of, small matters. But one of them was a large matter. Last year, once COVID started, the auto dealerships didn't have a lot of capacity because they had sent most of their employees home. And so for the last two years, we haven't been able to order deputy cars.
Oh, wow.
And so we like to get a third of our cars every other year. And so last night, we wound up ordering 11 of them because we haven't ordered them for the last two years.
Okay, okay.
And but one of the issues has been, we ordered a few vehicles last year, and it's taken a year to get these in.
Oh, wow.
And so we've kinda had to bundle it all at once. So largest thing was working with the sheriff last night, and but we got it done, got it approved, and we'll be ordering 11 deputy cars. And so like I said, it's like a three-year compilation of everything.
So 11 brand-new cars.
11 of them. And you know, we pay for that stuff through Splotst. And which is great. If you guys don't know about that, as far as how it works, we split it with the cities by percentages, and this is an extra cent on everything that anyone purchases in Tooms County. And we're able to take those things and take care of like, you know, situations like this or road improvements, which is great because the, the bearings of all these taxes, otherwise would be on the landowners. If you own a home, you know, you pay city taxes if you're in the city. You pay county taxes if you're in either, and you pay school taxes. And so a way so that everything continue to move forward is to do Splotst. And it's been great for the community. I know Vidalia Alliance has benefited from it, Tooms County has benefited from it, and Santa Claus, they get a percent of it.
Okay.
So it's been great.
Wow. So as the county commissioner, for those persons who are listening this morning and might not fully understand your role or, or your roles as commissioners, help us, kind of walk us through who you are and what it is you do.
Okay. Well, we, in Tooms County, we had a sole commissioner, meaning just one man or lady, until 1960. And then they voted for us to go to a commission. So we have four commissioners.
All right.
So every district of the county has a commissioner.
So the whole county, all of Tooms County?
That's correct. It's in four districts.
Okay.
But what's unique about our county is, a lot of times, they would break that out into five districts, and then the commissioners themselves would vote for a chairman. But our county elected to, for the chairman to have to run the entire county. And so that's why we're broken only into four districts. And then the chairman has to be voted on by all the citizens.
All of the citizens.
Which is really unique. And let's be honest, I think it's a lot better way because if you get, if you've got four commissioners and two of them wanna be chairman, you're gonna start out with a fight, right? And so you, you want, you want harmony and cohesiveness.
Right.
And so our guys back in the early 60s, that group, that was a very wise decision to go that way.
So you're in your role then because all of the citizens of Tooms County voted for you to be in that position.
That's correct. And our, our biggest role is, is to set policies, policies for our citizens.
Okay.
We also oversee the courthouse. That's, whenever I was elected, I was given a key, and it's our responsibility to house everyone.
Wow.
Judges, the court systems, the tag office, the tax office, the clerk of courts.
Wow.
We, we basically see to it that all these places have a facility. And that leads into kinda the, the big thing that we've all been working on that everybody's able to see is the new courthouse.
The new courthouse.
And so it's our responsibility to make sure that we have enough room and that we can take care of our citizens. And we had a year-long study done on that to see what it would take to make this thing happen. And they came back and said, you guys need three times the amount of space that you currently have.
Wow.
And so it's our responsibility as a commission to make sure that, that we're properly taken care of, that everyone can do their jobs with the right space, especially judges. We're under a lot different laws now, federal mandates than we were in the 1950s and 60s whenever our courthouse was built.
Okay.
There's a lot more rules to protect judges that we're not able to do with our current setup that we were able to get right with this one.
Okay.
And so it's neat. It's kind of like resetting and starting over again. And so but, but we work hand-in-hand as a commission with the sheriff. He's a constitutional officer. So he is, he's elected by the people. He, that person, that entity is its own entity.
That's right.
And but they work hand-in-hand with us as a commission for, to help with their budgets and to help make sure that our citizens are safe. Clerk of Courts, they work hand-in-hand. That, that's a constitutional officer.
Yes.
The Tax Commissioner.
Tax Commissioner.
She currently is, she's a constitutional officer, and she works under her own office, but they work with us, you know, setting budgets because it's been given to the commissioners that we're the ones that have the ability to levy taxes.
Okay.
And so that's where it all comes back to, we have to levy the taxes, and then we can disperse it to each of these departments that have their own constitutional officers as a head.
And they all have their own individual budgets.
They do, set by themselves. And so but they just have to work with us as a whole to make sure that we don't put too much.
You all kind of regulate it.
We do, because we can stress out the taxpayers, which, you know, like if you see what's going on right now, everyone this year, I've heard more about inflation in 2022 than in, in my adulthood, you know, this, it was a big deal back in the 70s. But this year, we've had more inflationary issues than you and I have dealt with in our, in our adulthood. And so you take, you take a homeowner, this person is paying, if they live in the city limits, they're paying city taxes, they're paying county taxes, and they're paying school taxes. So our tax rate goes up because of inflation. And now this individual's paying more for food. They're paying more for their own personal health insurance. They're paying more for fuel, more for tires. It, it goes down the list. And so how much can these individuals bear? And so it's our responsibility to, to keep taxes just as low as we can. And so it, it's tough from the respect of, we have to help with all these departments and everything so that the government locally functions properly. But you also have to never forget where those dollars come from. And the lighter that person's load is, the easier it is for them to take care of all their other issues. And inflation's brought all that to a head this year.
So tell me, within, within the confines of all of the things that you've talked about, how does that like affect the other accommodations we have as citizens here in the county, like our roads, our sewage, trash? Is that something that the county oversees or is that left with our city municipalities?
It's split. So in the unincorporated areas, which is a fancy word for the county boys, that area is, that's taken care of by us. And so if you've seen these, we call them convenience centers, where you're able to bring your trash to.
Yeah, yeah.
Those areas, we, we oversee that along with our landfill, which like our Commissioner Darrell Nobles is one of the two on our landfill committee.
Got it.
And he's at Swanee right now is what it's called, it's an acronym, and getting his accreditation because we oversee these things.
Got it.
And but we have a contract with the cities to accept their trash, but their contract with the, like Republic or whomever it may be, is to bring it to us.
To bring it to us, okay.
And so that is part of the, of being a citizen here, you also, we're very unique in that we have our own landfill, and but we oversee that stuff as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, who's responsible for where the different dump sites are, are located? Cause I've seen some restructuring here in the last few years.
There, that's, that's the commission's decision where these are. There were more, if you recall, before they went to the convenience center, they started that before my tenure.
Okay.
But the deal was, as you saw, they were very unsightly. We, we did have one, we had one left. And but we try to do it based on population.
Okay.
And making it convenient, just to have in a center location, for lack of better terms.
Wow, well, we, we, we all can see the current project of the courthouse. And I know that there are several other projects potentially that you're working on. We wanna talk about those. We definitely wanna hear a little bit about the courthouse and its progress. We're gonna take a break, and then we'll come back right after these messages. We're talking with our chairman, Chairman Sykes. So ladies and gentlemen, don't go anywhere. We'll take a break, and we'll be right back after these messages.
Smarter, not harder. Here at Vidalia Federal, we are all about that phrase, as we strive to make your life easier. No more drowning in paperwork or being interrogated over the idea of buying a house. Getting a home loan should be an enjoyable, simple process, not a daunting task. This is Julia McKenzie with Vidalia Federal Savings Bank, and I am here to make the mortgage process easy and simple. Come see me at the Vidalia branch on Jackson Street to talk about your next home purchase or refinance. I look forward to serving you. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
It's fall, y'all, and you know what that means. It's game time. So fire up the grill, call your family and friends, and invite them over to watch the game in your new home from Todd Paget Housing Center in Claxton, Georgia. This is Anthony J., and I'm here to tell you that we can help you punt away that rent payment and drive you down the field to homeownership. We'll bust you through all the mortgage paperwork too, like old Herschel Walker busting through a defensive line. Come see the Todd squad today at Todd Paget Housing Center right off of Highway 280 in Claxton, and let's kick off to your dream home. Todd Paget Housing Center, your dream, our team.
Dorothy Davis with Southeastern Business Solutions here, specializing in website services, graphics management, and video editing. We have partnered with TCB Broadcasting to bring your sponsorship ads to life with their live on-air programs, which are recorded and archived along with your sponsorship ads as they were aired at the time of production. These programs are viewable by anyone at any time from anywhere on major social outlets like YouTube or Facebook to include TCBBroadcasting.com's website. That's a lot more viewing potential, more than you would get than with a still banner that's only viewable by website visitors. With this kind of viewing potential, you wanna make sure your ad says a lot more than a simple animated logo can say. These services are only available on TCBBroadcasting.com, and the spots are limited. So reach out to your TCB Broadcasting account executive and get yours locked in as soon as possible. You can bring your own video with you, or you can email Dorothy@SoutheasternBusinessSolutions.com, and you and I, we can put our creative minds together to come up with the perfect ad that says the perfect message and gets you the perfect attention.
Welcome back, welcome back to this edition of Community Matters. I'm your host, The Doc, and we are here with the Honorable Chairman of our Commissioners, none other than Mr. David Sykes himself. Mr. Sykes, we've got a huge project right downtown. Everybody can see it, and it looks like it's all coming together. Can you give us some insight on our courthouse and, and how the progress is going?
2023, everything looks really good. We've had to move the schedule twice. We were hoping to move everyone from the current courthouse to the new courthouse in December, back last year.
Okay.
But we have dealt with more delays through manufacturing in the last year than, I'm in construction, and we've dealt with it more in the last year than we have in the last 20 years that I've been personally involved. And so but we look like, well, we'll be moving into it the middle of next year. And then we'll finish up the rest of the project from then, cause we've gotta move everybody in there, right?
Okay.
And then we can finish the rest of this project. And so we hope to be cutting a ribbon at Christmas time next year on the entire project, but we, we should get everyone moved there by the middle of next year. I actually toured it last Friday.
Oh, wow.
And the sheet rock is in on all three floors.
Okay.
And so whenever you start putting sheet rock in, you're getting close. Yes, so it's, it's absolutely stunning whenever you walk in and get to see what, what we as a community have been able to do.
It looks massive.
It, it really does. And the thing about it is, is whenever we kicked it off, it is still smaller square footage-wise than what the studies showed that we needed. But you, you have to say enough somewhere, right? And so this building is built, it's all concrete and steel.
Wow.
And it's built to be added on to, and so that our grandkids or our grandkids' grandkids will never have to start from scratch again.
That's good.
They can literally take and add on to the wings of this structure and almost double the size of it. So this, this should be it for Tooms County. But it's beautiful. As we walked through last week, like I said, all three floors have sheet rock. And we're getting close from that respect. It's neat to look up and see the dome. My family and I went to Washington DC a few weeks ago.
Okay.
And we went to the US Capitol.
All right.
And once you walk into the, to the dome room, if you'll look straight up, there, there are murals on the ceiling. And one of them was George Washington, and it's to give you the impression of him ascending into heaven. And so, and as I looked up in our dome, I said, what are we gonna put up there? And everybody giggled and said, paint. So but it's getting close, it's getting close. I do wanna send a shout out to Lyons, Vidalia, Santa Claus. That project is being-
Especially this time of the year, we can't leave Santa Claus out.
Exactly. That project is 100% paid for by Splotst.
Wow.
Everybody came to the table and said, because the courthouse is for all citizens. It doesn't matter if you're unincorporated or incorporated.
Yeah.
It's 100% for all the citizens.
That's good.
And the cities stepped in and said, hey, we're, we're gonna help with this, and this is a Splotst thing. And so everyone pitched in. And so whenever it says Tooms County Municipal Building or whatever it is on the top of it, y'all, please, please know that project would have never happened without the cities being such a huge part.
Do, do you have a, an approximate figure for what it costs to build it?
$34 million for the courthouse and the jail expansion.
Wow.
We could house around 126 inmates. We've increased that with this new expansion by 64.
Oh, wow.
Another thing, we, we had built that, the jail in the early 90s. Things have changed since then. As you know, now, mental health is, is the hot button.
It is.
And you have to have specific jails, cells, excuse me, to house these people.
To accommodate them.
Yeah. And so those were things that we, we weren't set up for. And, and now you have to, if the individual has handicap issues, you have to have a jail that can accommodate that individual. And so things evolve, and we're trying to get all of it right. So it was a good time to hit reset on that as well.
Yeah.
And so, but it adds cost. It does. Your average inmates in the late 80s, whenever they were building this, was about 60. And our average inmates now runs on 125, 120.
Wow.
And so if that trend is, over the last 25 years, we've doubled. They, the numbers came back and said, we can put 64 more beds and possibly be able to get another 30 years out of that. And so-
You know, I'm, I'm listening to that, but are there any programs that the county sponsors or supports to kinda curtail that number so that we don't have to keep as many?
From a county standpoint, no. Once you use tax dollars, it's a tough situation because it, it goes all the way back to the Constitution. Tax dollars are to be used for tax things, to protect the citizens through military or through, which that's federal, but military or through Sheriff's Departments is what was firstly created.
Okay.
And then we evolved into like a road system. As y'all know, we scrape dirt roads, 350 miles worth of them. And so that is predominantly what it's done, what it's set for. And the goal was, was to keep taxes low so that you and I as the individual will be able to take our own personal money and help with these things.
Got it.
And so that's why, if you remember, Milledgeville had a mental, mental institute. I believe that was dissolved under Jimmy Carter's government, whenever Jimmy, Jimmy Carter's government, whenever he was governor. And but there's a huge push for that to come back now, for the state to help with this, come back in. And because we, it's kinda off the rails.
It is.
I, I don't know how many citizens we had in Georgia in 1970, but I would be shocked if it, if we haven't almost doubled since then.
Yeah, and then the pandemic, I mean, that just exacerbated.
That exasperated what we were dealing with.
Right.
And let's be honest, you know, when, when that came out, it hit March, and our president came on and said, hey, there's something going on, everybody's getting sick. Well, the news took that, and by April, I was wondering if we were all gonna die, right? They had, they had came on and just said how much, how bad this thing was. And so you take that, and if somebody was having a hard time before that, you talking about dampening their spirits quickly. And so we're living in the product of that now, and we don't know what's gonna happen.
You, how long have you been the Chairman of our Commissioners?
Next month will be the end of my sixth year, so I'm in the middle of a second term.
Alrighty.
And I would tell y'all, I have been able to travel around this state. Our association for counties in the state of Georgia is called the ACCG, like the cities have the GMA.
Right.
And, and through the ACCG, they're the ones who will certify us as commissioners.
Okay.
But within that organization, there's a Board of Managers and other boards of it. I've been able to be elected to the Board of Managers, and I'm the current second Vice President, in which April of 2024, I will be the President of our association.
Oh, wow.
And I'll get to represent the entire, represent the entire state of Georgia.
Wow.
And so it's really neat. We take up-
We've got a, we've got something to be proud of in our Commissioner.
You've got a humble servant who loves people, and it's neat that people around Georgia really appreciated that.
Wow.
And so one of our other Board of Managers meeting is, who I spoke about early, Commissioner Darrell Nobles.
Okay.
He's also on the board. And so it's really neat. Tooms County is, is very well represented across the state.
What are our other Commissioners? You've got Darrell-
Wendell Dixon.
Uh-huh.
He's, pretty well covers the city of Vidalia.
Okay.
You have Alfred Kason.
All right.
Alfred's, his district goes from the east side of Lyons to the north side of Vidalia.
Okay.
And then you have Commissioner Tommy Rollins.
Okay.
His district four, it's pretty well the south of Vidalia to the Altamaha River, and then Highway 178 that runs through New Branch.
That's right.
It's kind of the south side of Highway 178.
Right.
And Commissioner Nobles is the north side of the county through the north side of Highway 178.
And, and then we have you as our Chairman, and then we have a county-
County Manager. We went to that 2010, right around in that era, because the Commission Chairman, that used to be a full-time position.
Oh.
And so, yeah, so the, you, if you took the job, you were in it.
You were in it, literally.
You'd be able to, like now, you have your own, you, you do other work. I do, and-
In addition to all of these responsibilities.
And so it would have not made it feasible because you pretty well have to, it's 100% your job. And so, but having a county manager allows you to bring in a selected professional
Okay.
to help run all the day-to-days.
And that's a full-time position.
It's a full-time position currently held by John Jones. He is, I, I tell everybody, John is the greatest.
Is that right?
Yes, fantastic man, fantastic character. And he's an accountant by trade.
Okay.
And I'll say that through, this is my sixth year, and the one thing that I harp on is, is that we balance the budget. And that's through, hell, the helm of that is with John Jones.
That's good.
But we've balanced the budget every year. This year, for example, I'll flip taxes with you. The way that, that your property taxes are assessed are based off of the value, and the values change.
That's right.
So over the last two years, everybody's property values have gone up because these homes are selling for 40, 50% more than they ever had before.
That's right.
So you're, in theory, your taxes go up because they're set by a millage rate. Well, this year, we were able to, the, the adjusted millage rate, we went down a half of a mill because we have a balanced budget. And we said, we're not going to capture that additional tax money because of the increase because we have a balanced budget. And we just set the millage rate last month and cut it by half a percent. That's fantastic. You, now you go up a half a percent, and you have a bunch of people extremely angry.
You're going the wrong way, and I'm one of them.
Yeah, exactly, see, me too. And so but I've, I've talked with everyone, whenever I get an opportunity to speak, we balance the budget. And if we have to increase, I'll be honest with you, but I'll also be honest with you in the decreases. We had a balanced budget, and we cut the mill a half a percent. That's huge.
That's good, good.
So great group, these Commissioners, they're, they're bankers, business owners. It is the most cohesive group to be a publicly selected group that I have ever been a part of.
Excellent.
They, they're a joy to work with, and we have never put anything on the agenda in the last six years that I've been here. We've never put anything on the agenda that all Commissioners would not agree to.
That's good.
I, I, it's cohesiveness is how you make real progress.
Excellent.
And if everybody doesn't agree to it, it's probably a bad idea. Let's move forward.
That's right.
So-
Well, how many years, terms, I mean, how many, how many years is one term?
Four years. Statewide, like our Senator Blake Tillery, fantastic. Our new state representative Lisa Hagan, fantastic. Those are two-year terms.
Okay.
So it, that's, bless them, it's like a revolving door.
Yeah.
But luckily, the county, they're four years.
Are you limited in the number of terms you can, you can-
You are not, just by the citizens now, because they can vote you out at any time.
Got it.
And so that, guys, whenever you hear people speak about term limits, it really is, it's just, you know, people was-
It's up to the people.
It's up to the people. And so, but you're not limited only by yourself. And like I said, I'll be, I'll take President of the ACCG the last year of my second term, and that would go over into a third term, of which I don't know if I'll do that or not, but it goes into a third term. And so I'm at a crossroads.
Well, maybe you'll run again, and, and we certainly thank you for the service you've given us thus far.
It's humble servant, it's been one of the joys of my life. The people of Tooms County have given me so many opportunities, and I'm not saying that to just try to sound like an elected official, I'm not, I'm being honest. They have been so kind to me and to my family, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve.
If our listeners want to contact their local Commissioner or perhaps yourself or the county manager, how would they go about doing that?
Yep, they'll call our office, the County Commissioner Office. All you'd have to do is just Google it, and it's a Lyons number, 526. But just Google it, County- And it's a Lyons number, five two six. But just Google it, county commissioner office, speak with our county clerk, Helen Harris.
Okay.
And she'll get you in the right direction.
She'll put you where you need to be.
Yes.
Well, this is excellent.
I I have thoroughly enjoyed this.
Yeah, yeah. We we gotta have you back again
Yes, sir.
after you take over your leadership and kind of see, you know, where things are going with that. But uh you know, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate your time. Got you up early this morning, but you're an early bird anyway, aren't you?
Yes, sir. Being in the construction industry, you have to be.
Excellent. Well, we thank you so much. Uh ladies and gentlemen, this has been our chairman, uh Chairman David Sykes. And again, we thank you and all of our commissioners for the great work that you're doing.
Thank y'all for having us.
All right. This has been an edition of Community Matters. Uh certainly, we thank Scott for uh working the boards for us and always uh the great job he's doing on the morning show. Thank uh Ms. Dorothy Davis for our keeping up our website and recording this session. If you want to view it, go back to our website, tcbbroadcasting.com, tcbbroadcasting.com. And you can go there and you can see this in our archives. Always thank uh our GM, uh Ms. Robin Crabb for stepping in and and being a part of the show as well. God bless you, everybody. Come back again on next week. Um and we will be here again with another great show and telling you what's going on in our great community here. Uh God bless you and be well. Take care.
You've been listening to Community Matters, a service of TCB Broadcasting. Today's show was brought to you by Applin Healthcare in Backslip, Vidalia Federal in Vidalia and Lyons, Johnson and Johnson Transport in Yousalda, and by Todd Paget Housing Center in Claxton. Tune in next week at eight fifteen during Y-101's live morning show for another special guest. We'll talk about what's happening right here in our hometown. Community Matters is a service of TCB Broadcasting on Country Legends, Y-101.